You know, I was trained as a lawyer. I was taught to think like a lawyer and talk like a person. All right, so she's been in government for how many years?
About 35.
Yeah. This is no joke. DeKalb County was majority Republican when Chris Morris started working here, okay? So she's got all this technical stuff, but talk to us like you're us, okay?
Thank you, Mr. CEO. We are so pleased that we have a program to help people buy homes. And we're providing an $8,000 down payment assistance program for first-time home buyers. We've had over 100 people participate in that program in the last 15 months. That's one part of Wendy Cab Lives. Another program that was recently added that the CEO talked about was the one where teachers, firefighters, police officers can buy hut foreclosed properties at a 50% discount. We've had about four that have used that program since November. Oh, total number between all the programs? Down payment assistance and neighborhood stabilization, over 300.
Okay. And tell me this. A portion of that money that Kristen told us has been federal money that we had to apply for to go to rehabilitate foreclosed homes so that they could be put back on the market. And there were three grant programs. We received, I think, more money than any county government in metro area. What was the total amount of money we received for the rehabilitation of homes?
We received about $18.5 million for the first neighborhood stabilization program. And with that, we were able to help renovate an apartment complex in Clarkston. Totally renovated, brought it up to a Class B complex, and we're very proud of that. And then for Neighborhood Stabilization Program 3, the county received about $5.3 million. And Hidden Hills is the designated community for NSP 3. And hopefully, within the next 60 days, we'll be able to kick off the activity in that area. Thank you.
I'm working on it. NSP.
No.
NSP 3. Okay, so that's the federal funding that goes. So $23.5 million total. Over 300 homes with down payment assistance have come through those programs.
That's good. The other question I have, where will the police precinct at South DeKalb be completed?
What's the completion date, Chief? Do you know?
The end of this year.
Okay, the end of this year, he tells me. And we're also looking at other locations for police. We're reconfiguring. That's a new one that's going to be built. We've identified some other locations so we can move our police precincts. Really, because they incorporated, the cities have their own precincts. We're trying to concentrate our police precincts in unincorporated areas so that we can serve more people and have them closer to the precincts. So we have our new reconfiguration plan.
I did not see the news that you, you know, alluded to in your presentation. But what are you going to do about the animal shelter? Are you going to buy a new, build a new one? Or are you going to renovate the existing one?
All right, that's a long question. You got, how many more questions on that piece of paper?
I just got one.
I mean, that's a long answer. I'm gonna give you that answer, but...
Just give me just...
Okay, do the steam, where's steam? Do the steam miles approach. Hit me with all of them at one time, and then I'll try to answer.
I just got one other thing.
And I'll answer that one for you, okay?
Okay. Now, on public transportation. Now, we want rail. We want rail on I-20, and we want it now. The only reason that we... You mentioned that Gwinnett and Cobb. None, I know that nobody got everything. Gwinnett and Cobb should not have been at the front of the list above DeKalb to get rail. We have been paying 7, that 1% over 30 years. And now we're going to be paying, we're asked if it passes. I am adamantly opposed to it. And I'm gonna do everything that I can to try to get it defeated. Because we don't need empty promises again. And if we pass that, now, that 225,000, is that for the rapid bus? We don't need any more buses. We don't want no more buses. The only way that these buses can get you from one destination to the next is if there is no transportation out there on these roads. So, you know, we're tired of sitting. We should have been at the front. Now, I attended those ARC meetings, many of them.
I need you to answer me a question because I want to have enough time to respond. I hear, I hear everything you're saying, and I'm gonna give you a forum, but this, you know, answer me the question.
I attended the meetings, and I was highly disappointed because I don't think that we had adequate representation. And I'm one of those that you were not there down at the, on Edgewood. And people just sat there like a knot on a log. Nobody opened the mouths and said anything. So we didn't have anything, you know, I just felt like we didn't have anybody fighting for us to get rail in South DeKalb. So what... Yeah. What are you gonna do about it? How are we gonna get rail?
Yeah, that's a fair question. And, and thank you, Zippora. All right, I'm gonna answer the rail question first. I'm gonna try to ask y'all to, so I can get as many people. We got about 15 more minutes. I'm gonna try to ask you to, you know, try to keep them to one question. But I'm gonna answer rail, and then I'm gonna answer animal services. And neither one of them are short answers. I was at every roundtable meeting. And we had, what was it, $22 billion that we started with? But the penny was only gonna generate $6.14 billion of regional projects. And so that $22 billion had to be whittled down. And I can tell you, some projects got completely cut from the list in that $22 billion. And anybody who's ever been involved in any kind of public political process, whether you're doing it as an elected official or whether you're doing it as a citizen, if you've been politically engaged, you understand that as decisions are being made, some things get cut down. And I can tell you, when you said you didn't have adequate representation, you had strong representation because not only was I in the public meetings, I was in the backdoor meetings. I was in the backdoor meetings I was invited to. And I wasn't on that there was an executive committee that was supposed to be making the first round of decisions. And Mayor Bill Floyd from DeKalb was DeKalb County's representative. But I didn't let Mayor Bill Floyd... Well, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, he didn't. No, he didn't. But I can tell you this. I mean, I disagree with you, Zippora, and that's okay. Because we love each other, and we can disagree. But I would tell you this. Even though I may not have been invited in some of those meetings, as your CEO, I put myself in every one of those meetings. Because I know how sausage is made. And what happens is that the people who not in the meetings get cut out. And I was gonna make sure that DeKalb County got, didn't get cut out. Now, DeKalb County did get cut out at first. We got cut down to zero on that I-20 rail line, okay? And the DeKalb County citizens collectively, you know, said, "We don't want that." And when we went back in those sessions, I said, I told y'all at the beginning that the I-20 line had to be funded. And we began to form collaborations with other leaders around the region and got them to give up project money. And we changed some of our road money to rail money. So, you want rail. I've got an opportunity, we have an opportunity, not me, we have an opportunity to get... You, you want, you want rail. I think what you mean by that, let me, let me back up. Is you want the $522 million that was put on the chart the first time to get heavy rail to, to Westwood Chapel Road? Well, but that was, that's not gonna happen. I mean, that's not gonna happen in this phase. Hold on, hold on, listen. Hold on, hold on, we, we're gonna do a decent... Okay, okay, but that was never on this plan. Because nobody is gonna get, you know, poor, you know, some of these other counties, I don't even wanna name the names, but they didn't get close to what the, the over a billion dollars that DeKalb County's getting. Well, that's right. You're right, they haven't paid for it. And they, I'm, I'm with you. They shouldn't get it. They shouldn't get it. And so we're getting a more significant 20... Hold on, hold on, hold on. All right, you gonna let me answer? You gonna let me do this? Okay. I told you that, and I'm telling you that today. Nothing's changed from what I said before. We can get rail, but we gotta have a down payment. And it's not gonna all come from the taxes that are paid from the DeKalb County citizens. It's gonna be part federal money, it's gonna come from what we've invested in MARTA. But I can't, no, no transit system in the United States of America has been built without federal money. So if anybody says that we're gonna just self-finance a transit system, we'll never get it done. There's no transit system in the United States that's been built without federal money. And there's no way we're gonna get federal money without a significant down payment. And I'm telling you, 225 million is a significant down payment. So I believe a short-sighted approach is to say, "I don't, I want more money, and therefore I want no money, 'cause I didn't get more money." No money means no rail. No rail, no tax. No tax, no rail. Bottom line, you want rail, you make the investment, you put the down payment down, and then you go lobby for the rest because you have a down payment, and you lobby with the region. And that's how we get rail. Now, you, you asked about bus rapid transit, yes. We're gonna have to do this in phases. In a perfect world, I lay down some heavy rail tomorrow, and we'd have a train all the way to Stonecrest. But we're not gonna get all the way to Stonecrest in one rail. And in Cobb County, they're not gonna get all the way to the gallery in one, in one fell swoop. Gwinnett County, they got just barely enough money to do some research for the extension of the line into Gwinnett County. Clayton County got even less. Rockdale County, they're just looking to the next 10 years down the road. They want this line built out to Westwood Chapel Road so that the next phase can go into Rockdale County. I talked to Richard Oden about that, the chairman over there, just Sunday. So what we will do is, we can start with what's called bus rapid transit on dedicated right-of-way. And that's not buses. It's, it looks like a train. Go to Eugene, Oregon, BRT, just Google it. Just Google it when you go home. Eugene, Oregon, BRT. That's what a BRT looks like. It can then be converted to a light rail system. Go to Portland, Oregon, and look at their light rail system. It's clean, it's efficient. And even if we get light rail, I don't know about heavy rail, what's called heavy rail. Not too many people are getting heavy rail systems this money, these days, because the money is simply like there. But right, light rail is clean, and it's efficient, and it moves people to where they have to go. So the plan on the table is to make the down payment. The other plan on the table is to do nothing. And to come back to you in another four or five years. And then we may be able to do less. Because the federal money, we don't know what's gonna happen. The federal money that's available today may not be available then. It's almost a surefire loser for the DeKalb County. That's what I can tell you. Animal services. We got a problem, okay? Because we have a, a, a center that has been in dilapidating condition for a number of years. And not only is it bad for the animals, it's bad for the employees. I was out there last week. I could barely breathe. And the director is showing me around, I don't know if Director Mooneyham is here today, Public Safety Director William Miller was with me, and they're talking to us, and Dr. Saman was asking questions, and I'm like, "Man, I gotta breathe. Can we go outside?" It's bad, and we need to fix it. So immediately, we have funded in this year's budget 10 new positions so we can hire some more resources, more people to work in animal services. Some of that money was put into a reserve account. We've got an agenda item before the Board of Commissioners, asking them to take it out of the reserve account so we can begin to go hire those people. Secondly, we have another item before the Board of Commissioners for the funding, also in this year's budget. The allocation of funding, almost $400,000 total, so we can build a new air conditioning system, a new HVAC system. Because it's getting hot, and it's getting bad in there, okay? And we need a new system. We, the Public Safety Director is working on some code changes, so we have to have some changes in our codes and our fees. And we've got an RFP going out within two weeks. Our Chief Procurement Officer is nodding his head yes for the outsourcing of at least some portion of our animal services so that we can have a better operation, a cleaner operation, and we can do it hopefully more efficiently and cheaper. Now, this is what the task force has told us. We appointed a task force several months ago. They've come out with a report, it's online, because everything we're doing is above board. You can go to the DeKalb County's website and read it. But essentially, what they're telling us is, we need a comprehensive approach. We can't do everything immediately that they've asked us for, but we need a comprehensive approach. That includes public education. We need to teach our owners of pets how to properly care for their pets. We're gonna be moving in the short term to off-site adoptions, where on the weekends we'll be taking the animals to places like Pet Smart and Pet Supermart and taking them out on those, you know, those shopping, what do you call it, those sort of storefront shopping center locations and putting our pets up for adoption. We're looking in to see whether we have a vehicle so we can have a mobile adoption center that will transport those animals around the county. And we've identified three sites county-owned, because that'll be cheaper, that we can potentially use to either build a new center, and we're looking at some financing options for that, or to upgrade an existing facility so we can have a better, cleaner facility. And we hope to be in construction within the year. We're gonna have an ongoing oversight committee, or, I'm not sure if that's the name of it, but something that, a group of citizens that essentially will be holding our feet to the fire to make sure that we're progressing. And I believe there's a commitment, I can guarantee you there's a commitment from the CEO's office to do it. And I believe there's a commitment from the Board of Commissioners, from what I'm hearing. And that's a good thing. Because anytime you've got the administration and the Board of Commissioners working together, you can get it done. So I, I think we'll get there and be able to deliver that for the citizens of the DeKalb County. Long overdue, Zippora. So, thank you for your question. Okay, who's next? Henry? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioner, CEO.
Good evening.
What you just finished speaking on, I oftentimes take opposition to things that a lot of people may agree with. To me, the money that you're gonna expend for animals could better be used for teenagers and keeping them, finding programs that will keep them from becoming juvenile delinquents. I love my dog when I had dogs, but I didn't love them more than I love my children. And I don't see the need for all of this extra money that perhaps should be on a referendum to see how many citizens in DeKalb County want their money going millions of dollars or even hundreds of thousands of dollars going for dogs and cats. That's a waste of money to me. My tax dollar, and I've been in the county for 41 years as a property owner. But my real questions, my other questions have to do with Section 8. And it's, it's, I know it's another program now, but I'm talking about the people who came into DeKalb County from other counties. And our neighborhoods have really been trashed. They're slums. I live not far from Hidden Hills. And overall, it's, it's a slummy area. The foreclosures, the rentals, they've rented to Section 8. And no one has come through to see how they're keeping. If you go down South Harrison, you can look and see where everybody's renting, where it looks like back in the days of the 50s and the 40s and the 30s, when we had to live on a farm, and we didn't know any better. And nobody's come through to actually see and try to enforce through the renter, the homeowner themselves who are renting these properties out, to bring it up to a standard to get the people out of the, out of the houses. You have been sending people that have been, whatever their infringements have been against the county, they have come up and down South Harrison and cleaned up. But before they can clean up, the very next day, people are throwing trash out. The park on South Harrison, my husband went there last Friday, he said it was clean. Saturday and Sunday, it looks filthy. All over again, people, first off, we need to educate our citizens as, as grandparents and as parents or whatever. We need to educate our citizens that you don't throw trash out of your, your windows. You take your trash to your house and throw it in the trash can. So what I'm suggesting, and I'm not mad with you, I'm just upset with you about the animal control thing, but I'm really upset about this. But could we not have billboards around the county that has something that says, "Put a bag in your car and put your trash in it, take it home and dump it"? The other thing that I have a question on is whether or not...
Now, I'm trying to keep track of your things.
Okay, the first one had, had to do with the animals, which you've already addressed, what you're gonna do, but I think it's...
And you got one more thing?
The other one has to, had to do with Section 8. But the last thing had to do, do you know whether or not there's gonna be a military increase based upon all the foreclosures? And what was done as far as the foreclosure register, that they were supposed to be letting you know and paying a fee to keep things and properties up when it goes into foreclosure?
The foreclosure register is, and that, is that under your department also, Gary? That is going forth, yes. And that was designed that when we had vacant a foreclosed property, primarily that, you know, these are lenders who take over the property, and the property then goes into disarray. It's not being maintained. And so we now make those lenders register. There are certain fees for registering the property and certain penalties if they fail to register the property. And then we have the means of knowing who owns the property and who to contact to make sure that the property's maintained. There's no question that we've had some significant shift in homeownership as a result of the foreclosure crisis, as a result of the redevelopment of some in-town neighborhoods. A number of people moved to the DeKalb County. Section 8 is a federal housing program, so, and, and, but it's a federal housing program, but individual homeowners who move out of their homes and still maintain ownership of their homes can apply through the federal government for Section 8, and then they can put their homes on the market and rent them out. But the reason that we created the Office of Neighborhood Empowerment was to create an atmosphere of personal and neighborhood empowerment, to get our citizens to understand that government is an important partner, but that government will never, even in the best of economic times, be able to do everything, to meet every need. And so we need to empower our citizens and to engage them to work with their government. In other words, if we had fewer people throwing trash out in the communities where they lived, we wouldn't have to work so hard to pick it up. As you said, we go clean up, we do a sweep. You said the next day, next week, whenever, it's back down. I mean, it is incredibly difficult, so I think that's a part of our collective work. Obviously, as your CEO, I'm gonna continue to put the resources in to clean it up, and the squeaky wheel will get the grease. So some of those areas that I've heard about tonight, our staff is gonna be out tomorrow. And that's just the cold, hard facts of that. If, if I had enough people, enough resources that I could send everybody out to every area tomorrow, then I would do it, but I simply don't. Thank you. So let me, let me say this about animal control versus the issue related to teenagers. They're not mutually exclusive, first of all, because, again, I think you'd be really impressed, as I am, with a number of programs. I mentioned PAL Plus. We have a summer STEM program. We're about to do something even bigger and more significant with our, our students from a very undeserved population in the county. I think we're all gonna be proud of. I wanna build a Soapbox Derby Track at 124 with Parks money that's already been allocated. Why? Because I wanna introduce another activity to a segment of the population of kids and to teach them about science and math and let them have fun. But we're waiting on approval of a business plan because for some reason, some of the commissioners want a business plan. A business plan for a park. Now, when we built that roller skate park up in Dunwoody and some of those other things, nobody asked for a business plan. But suddenly, when we have money set aside to build a Soapbox Derby Track, and, and if you're not into Soapbox Derby, we got netball at Wade Walker, we got a whole lot of different... We wanna introduce our children to different types of activities, to expand their horizons. That's what life was all about. And we got some commissioners asking for a business plan. The money's there. We not only can create, you know, activity for our children, but we can generate money into the community because people will come from all over, and they'll stay at hotels at Stonecrest Mall while they race. And we could run a race once a month. I know that, 'cause we had to go ahead and put together a business plan. To build a Soapbox Derby Track. So I think you, you'd really be impressed by our parks and recreation activities that we're doing. And at the end of the day, you know what this job is really about? It's really about making the hard choices and making a lot of decisions, each, I mean, every minute, every day. That's, that's what my job is about. How we're gonna allocate funding. But at the end of the day, I also think we do a good job of doing good. I can't please everybody at every moment of the day, but I mind it, you know, I'm always mindful of the fact that neither could Jesus. But I can do a lot of good for the community in this job, and that's one of the things, quite frankly, I love so much about it. I can take one more question. Oh, over here. Boy Scouts? I thought the Boy Scouts had a question. Okay, I'm gonna take two more questions. He's last, but I, I'm happy to see the Scouts. I can't, I can't get, listen, I can't, I will stay. I'll stay here for a half an hour, but I promise that we would end on time, and we're about two minutes over, okay? So I won't be able to get all the questions in the public meeting, but I will stay around, and so will my staff. Yes, sir?
Hello, Commissioner, CEO. I just wanted to address one issue about the new Redan Rec Center. I was wondering, were you guys interested in putting a indoor aquatic center? There is not an indoor pool where you can swim year-round in this area of DeKalb County. We really like to...
Yeah, but there's gonna be. There's gonna be. We, we built two rec centers this year, or in the last year. One at the Redan Rec Center, and the other at Exchange Park, which is an intergenerational center. And the third facility that we're building now is a public-private partnership with the YMCA.
I'm familiar with that.
And that's gonna have an indoor and outdoor swimming facility.
Will that require membership for the Y, like most parks?
It will, it will be a reduced membership for the DeKalb County citizens, is that...
Okay.
Okay, the entry fee will be waived. And so that's a public-private partnership. We would not have, you know, we're building the facility, but we, but the YMCA will be operating the facility, and it'll be at, you know, a Y standard. So that's what we're able to add to our, to our parks facilities.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank the Scouts for being here. Hopefully, you're learning something tonight. I appreciate that. Okay, yes, sir?
Commissioner, just wanna let you know I'm a DeKalb voter, and I live, work, and play, and worship in the DeKalb County as well. But my question, I was concerned about the credit ratings. What kind of systems and procedures that we have in place to avoid us from taking that pitfall to lower our credit ratings? Because we all know how imperative it is to have good credit so the county can save money. And just wanna just add that I love DeKalb County. I think you're doing a good job to keep the good work up, but could you answer that question, please?
Yeah, that's a real important issue. And again, it's an issue we don't see. It's about how we, what steps we put in place to ensure that we have a strong credit rating. A couple of things that the rating, we learned from that experience. One is that we've gotta have good reporting. And so we have some checks and balances in place to ensure that we're properly accounting for our funds and that we're getting our reporting to Standard and Poor's and to Moody's. Those are the rating agencies who we work with as they require. And, and the other thing is something I can't guarantee you on, but it's important that we have sound budgets adopted. Now, we have a budget process, and this is where you come in. You have to be watching. It gets kinda boring to watch a budget. But what sort of sent us into a tailspin last year was that an unrealistic and unstable budget got a, not the budget we recommended, but a budget that had some severe budget cuts, was adopted by the Board of Commissioners. It was unsustainable. In other words, at some level, our departments cannot operate. So we have to have sustainable, realistic budgets adopted. Now, the Board came back mid-year and made the necessary adjustments. I think within a week after they made those adjustments, I mentioned Commissioner Johnson, and I flew up to New York. I mean, we went there waving and said, "We told you we were gonna do it," and we got it done. And then we began a months-long process of getting that rating back. We're not out of the woods yet. They're watching us. They're watching us, and they're gonna be watching us for some time because it's, it's a very intensive and detailed process, and they wanna make sure that over the span of time, we're gonna continue to make sometimes difficult but necessary decisions to make sure that we're funding our infrastructure and that we're, we're putting enough money away into our reserve account. That's our rainy day account, for example. It should equal one month's worth of spending, or about 45 million. It had dipped down into single digits. We got it back up to 30 million now. So we've gotta continue to put money back into our savings account every year until we can get there, and at the same time, fund our necessary operations. If we do less than either one, then we'll be in trouble. Now, I don't know what's gonna happen in the real estate market. You know, no economist really knows. We're seeing some glimpses of hope, and it's beginning to look good, okay? But should the economy go back into another tailspin, then we're gonna have to come back and talk to you all, 'cause if this were a corporation, you'd be our shareholders. This is a government, and you're our stakeholders. That's why we put together the report, the stakeholders you have. Just like a company would give a report to their shareholders, you are the shareholders of DeKalb County. You are the shareholders of the DeKalb County, and so we have a report that you have in front of you that outlines our progress and the things we're doing. But I think we're doing the right kinds of things so that if the economy continues to improve, we recover faster than the norm. And if the economy continues or gets back into being unstable, we're not as in bad shape as we would otherwise be. And I think that's good news. Those are things you can feel good about. Thank you all. I know I couldn't get to everybody tonight, but this is a wonderful turnout. Thank you for being here today. Please continue to stay engaged. We're having another one next Tuesday at Tucker High School. And what else do you want me to say? Okay. And stay engaged and involved. Thank you all.